I'd like to call this meeting to order and I'm gonna give Sal a second to bring our flag up for everybody. We're gonna give the pledge. There you go. Nice flag, Sal. Thank you. I'd like to start the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, liberty and justice.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask for, we've got a slight change in, I'm gonna double check with Deb. Did everybody see the correction in the agenda or just me, Deb, on consensus?
No, everybody's, hold on. Everybody did see it. I just added to your agenda because you didn't see it the first time.
Okay, alright, so I'd like to take a motion to approve the present agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Alright, anybody have any questions or concerns?
Can you just clarify which item number was modified?
It was just a mistake. You might not have saw the first one. It was consensus. It was...
Hold on.
It was...
Eight, number eight.
J eight.
It was Meredith Zap. We did, we had put her down for a one-year position, but it's actually two-year.
Okay, thank you.
Teacher leader position two years at a time. This is a new, when you get to it, this is a new teacher leader position that was created through the approval of the most recent contract.
Alright, any other questions or comments, concerns? All in favor? Hi. Alright, public comment. This opportunity, oh, there's one other thing I forgot, not public comment yet, but I just disclaimer, especially once again, I said it last meeting, but even on Zoom, these meetings are recorded. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of good and bad. Public comment. I don't, Sal, can you see hands that they're raised from our public?
Okay. We have, we have four attendees, three of our assistant principals and Rodney Stickles, I'm assuming representing the CCSTA.
Hey Rod, how you doing buddy? I know Mr. Forrest is on. Alright, I don't see any hands, right? So we're moving on. Board comment. Do any board members have any comments at this point or?
I actually, I do Craig, this is Muriel.
Yep, go ahead, Muriel.
I just want to say, I'm sure some of you saw the middle school presentation for Veterans Day. It was beyond, above and beyond anything that I've seen and how hard it must have, what work must have gone into that to make it so wonderful. It was, and it's on the website if some of you haven't seen it, it's absolutely worth watching. I've watched it twice. But make sure you have your Kleenex handy because the last, the last part of it's a tearjerker. It's wonderful.
That sounds wonderful.
Yeah, it's wonderful, yep.
They're, they're pretty tough live too, but it was a wonderful job in the context of all, all we're going through here with the video made. Really, really good job to everybody involved. Thank you, Muriel. Does anybody, any other board members have any comments or?
Yeah, I do. I don't know why my picture isn't up there, but at any rate, I have had some parents and some teachers ask me as school, you know, like with New York City, they were saying all along that if we would, they were to hit like the 3% rate of COVID, that they would shut the schools down. And obviously we don't, you know, we're not anywhere near that. But especially parents who work would like to know and teachers would like to get a little heads up that if we hit a certain percentage mark of people with COVID, that we would consider shutting down.
Sal, you're muted right now.
I wonder how many times in the world that's said a day.
What, what part? Which part, that you're muted or?
The ninety people that they need to come off mute. So some of that is our decision locally and some of it is the state's decision, right? So the New York City set a threshold that was lower than the governor set across the rest of the states. You've heard me talk in the past about yellow, orange and red zones. Under, and depending on what website you go to, the New York State Department of Health or the governors, the New York State website, they do seven-day rolling averages. And so when you talk about some of those infection rates, they're based on seven-day averages. And there's, we're not quite certain in terms of whether it'll be considered the capital region, whether it be considered by zip code, the zones are somewhat nebulous when they're created. But chances are, and it's not gonna happen overnight, but we're not, you know, we're not that incredibly far from that. If you look at the infection rate in the capital region, you pull up Columbia County, you know, it, it's, it's starting to touch that, that rate. If it gets over 4%, I believe that's the trigger that you go into between three and 4%, you go into that yellow zone. And that's where it starts to get, to be a little tricky because schools can stay open. But then they have a testing regimen, a testing requirement that they have to go through to stay open. And so there are, we have no intention right now. I know there's rumors, bus drivers get asked, teachers get asked. We have no intention right now to intentionally go full remote. You know, I know anxiety is building, but we are, like many districts locally, trying to stay open in person safely for as long as we can. Now, we all know that we have some holidays coming up and that may make it increasingly more challenging, but, and we do monitor on a daily basis. Right now, even some of the schools locally that have experienced a large number of positive cases are in most cases coming back on the 30th to start with in-person again and see where that goes from there. So I know, you know, I get, I get inquiries almost on a daily basis. If, and I don't want to speculate as to what we're gonna do if we go to yellow because there is some concern over testing capacity as well. We've had some employees this week become, exhibit some cold-like symptoms and they've gone, the protocols, they, you know, they need to seek medical attention to get tested. One individual who lives in Albany County, I think had to go to five testing centers, five testing sites on Sunday to try to find one place that had tests available. So they are getting increasingly more difficult. Some speculation is because some people are traveling for Thanksgiving and want negative, they want, want testing to be completed so they can be reassured when they're traveling that they're traveling safely. So I don't, I don't, I don't feel, I don't, hopefully I didn't dance around that answer. We, you know, we, we continue to monitor on a daily basis. And again, I'm gonna go a little bit in more into this during my superintendent's report. I want to talk a little bit about, you know, some of the cases we've had this week and I'll, I'll expand on that during that portion if you're okay with that.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions or concerns or new?
I think just, just to follow up on this, what probably really belongs as part of Sal's report, I just wanna make sure that I have a chance to ask a question. Perhaps Sal, towards the beginning of your narrative, so you don't have to go back and do it twice.
Okay, so during superintendent's report, Matt will have a question for you, Sal. Any other questions or concerns from board members? Alright, let's move along. I don't see, that's the only one with their hand still up.
Oh, let me.
Okay, we're gonna move right out along into building department reports. Can't wait to hear from Barb. And she always brings a great report, so.
And so Barb does not need any introduction. She's our food service superstar. You know, I'd be remiss to not start by saying, wow, you know, all of our food service personnel have really knocked it out of the park since March, above and beyond, in trying to make sure that our students' nutrition is of top priority. So with that, I'm going to, and also remind the board, as I mentioned in my end notes, that the supervisors, as they come and appear for some of the presentations between now and the beginning of the budget season, will be talking about more updates around their departments as opposed to the fiscal asset, aspect of their departments that Mr. Chuddy and the supervisors will deal with in the context of the budget planning calendar. So with that, I am going to turn it over to, oop, started on the wrong slide, sorry about that, Barb.
That's okay.
There we go. I'm gonna turn it over to Barb Murray.
Well, hopefully everybody can hear me.
Here, here you find Barb.
Thank you very much for that wonderful introduction. I don't know if it is truly deserving, but I hope all is well with everyone. We'll start with my little PowerPoint here. I just wanted to show you guys a couple pictures of what we do and what we're currently doing. The first slide, this is the container that we're using for hot meals. It's a three compartment container. It's microwavable, ovenable. We put all the hot food in it. It gets covered and we can keep it hot until we deliver it to the classrooms. On the second slide, just an example of what our bag breakfast looks like. It would be whatever the hot entree is or cereal as this one is with a fruit, a juice, a milk and silverware. This one also has crackers in it. The second one next to it is a picture of our lunch. This is actually our Thanksgiving dinner we did last Thursday. Turkey gravy stuffing, mashed potatoes roll and apple pie filling. On the third slide, this is an example of what I'm sending home to families. As it says here, this is for a family of three for five days. One side is all the frozen food they get. It's five entrees, five breakfasts, juice, fruit and all the veggies that they need. On the other side is their milk and anything that they can keep in their pantries, like there's raisins there, cereal and their condiments. So that will get a family of three through for five days. With that, we are currently doing only three students a day who pick up breakfast and lunch. On fully remote days, we'll send out maybe a number, another number, yeah, sorry, I'm tripping over my words. We'll send out another six meals. But with our box meals that we're sending home, I send either five days or three days depending on the family. And we're currently sending home for forty students. So I'm hoping that we'll see that increase. I've had a few phone calls this week so far, only being Tuesday about parents wondering how to get on it. So it might increase. In our last slide, this is just showing what we served October of last year and October of this year to give you a comparison of our meals that we served. Of course, enrollment is down. It seems to be ever going down. At MED, our participation rate for lunch last school year was at 45%, but this year we're at 35%. Our breakfast participation last year was at 25, but it's up to 32 this year. Lunch is delivered to classrooms and breakfast is offered in the hallway for the students. So they can pick it up on their way to class in the morning and I think that's really made a difference as to why it's increasing. For the middle school and high school, the participation rates are based on the hybrid students. So about half of what our enrollment is depending on the building. And of course, this could be different if all students were here. At the middle school, our participation rate for lunch last year was 44%. This year we're at 49. For breakfast, last year was 12%. This year we're at 16. Lunch is either delivered to the hallways of each grade at the middle school or if it's nice, they've been sending them outside. Breakfast is offered in the cafeteria, but we do have some staff members who are willing to bring lunches to the entrances, or I'm sorry, breakfast to the entrances and offer to students to take with them and that's kind of helped bring the numbers up. At our high school, our participation rate for lunch last year was 45%. We're at 42 right now. For breakfast, last year it was 14% and this year we're at 11%. All meals are served in the cafeteria at the high school. Some of the reasons that I think could be the reasons why our numbers are lower this year, at least in two of the buildings is we're not giving them as many choices as we did last year. With serving in the classroom, there's only just so much room we have to, you know, bring things down the hall. You know, and it gets really, it's time consuming to offer too many choices to the students. With the high school, more students seem to be going remote and there really, nobody really wants to drive and pick up meals on a daily basis. Also, four days in October that we were fully remote kind of hit us with that there at the middle school and the high school. Because of that, we potentially lost over 400 lunches and over eighty breakfasts. But with all that said, constantly talking to the staff or trying to figure out new ways and new ideas, it's something I always do. What can we do to improve, you know, what we're doing? So my last thing is our COVID accommodations and what we're doing to help, you know, prevent the spread of it. All of our staff wears masks at all times. Gloves are, they're worn to prep the food, to serve the food and they're changed often. And even if we're wearing gloves, staffs are washing their hands as much as they can. If they can't for some reason get to the, you know, to a sink to wash their hands, they're using sanitizer. All of our carts, serving lines are sanitized between deliveries and classes. All tables are clean and sanitized between prep. All of our food is pre-wrapped or sealed in a container. This helps protect students and staff so there's nothing getting in the food or on the food as we're going down the hall. And all of our plastic ware is also pre-wrapped. So that kind of helps. That's kind of all I've got. Any questions?
I've got one.
Go ahead, Matt.
So, I mean, the, the numbers there are not surprising. I think that we're seeing as best as could be expected in terms of participation. Certainly, delivery is challenging. The attendance is down. Do you think that these numbers, are you, is there a trend here? Is October, do you think representative of what, you know, if things sort of stay the way they are, what they're going to be like for the rest of the year?
Well, October and May are usually our longest months with the most number of days. But I think right now we're pretty consistent. I know we have a small number of students returning back to the elementary school, but you know, that's a dozen or so, so that won't really change the numbers that much. So I, I'm pretty comfortable to saying that we're probably gonna be consistent.
And the, the aid for these meals, that is, I, I know we've got increased increased number of students that have access to aid, but I believe, you know, we're, we're, our revenue is down, right? Cause we're not taking as much cash in. So I presume there's gonna be a, a big gap here at the end of the year and, and we're gonna have to increase the transfer, right?
Correct. I mean, we're, I wish it wasn't that way, but it's a, a great possibility. Right now, the only location that we can sell snacks at or even offer, you know, something for them to buy besides lunch is at our high school.
Yeah, I mean, it, it would have been too early, probably earlier in the year, but at this point, it might be, it might be time for us to ask Mike to put together a projection here. Certainly, this is gonna be one of the larger COVID-related costs, you know, to our budget and it may be difficult for us to attribute this. We're certainly not gonna get COVID-related comp on this or aid.
Right.
It will be intriguing because if you think about it, and Barb, correct me if I'm wrong, we are now reimbursed for all meals, right?
At, at the free rate, yes.
Right, so, and there's probably a gap on some days, but remember, we were trending pretty high in those numbers for which we were, we were supplementing 100% of the meal for those who were, were, you know, we didn't deny anybody. So it'll be interesting to see how this all plays out. Concern I have, as you know, from what we reported at the last board meeting, should we go all full remote? What may be different this time and a little bit concerning and maybe we could put together, you know, a volunteer program. But we won't know at this point whether we're gonna be able to use transportation services to deliver meals to free and reduced, to all students who needed it like we did in the spring. I know we're gonna be very, watching that very carefully. One of the governors' spokespersons did say that they're gonna try to work with districts and on the transportation aid that, that was, that's in jeopardy from the spring. But I think districts are gonna be very reluctant in repeating that without some assurances that the, the cost associated with that transfer, transporting the food to students' homes will be reimbursed or that it can be, the district's budgets can handle it.
Yeah, I mean presumably the, the transport expense is significant and I'm not even sure it's easy to, to estimate. But we probably have enough data at this point to, to do some, some projections on the in-school gap, right? That would be good to get, from my perspective, I'd like to know what that's gonna be.
Okay, will, will the, if we do full remote, will the services as they currently offered now continue without any reduction in services?
I, I would say yes. In, in the spring, we, you know, we're still probably going to be required to provide nutrition for, for a minimum of those students who are eligible under the free and reduced lunch program. So the difference being, and, and Barb reported this, there seems to be some reluctance in terms of coming out and picking up those meals. Maybe for some it's, it's inconvenient for others, they don't have a means to do it. But I could certainly foresee that if we go full remote, we will have a pickup program, like many other, just, not every district across the state use their transportation service. Some did various pickup sites throughout the district where they had families pick up food. So, you know, we're kind of small and centrally located. So I can't see us expanding on that, but you know, that might be a consideration too. We do have partners in terms of firehouses and town halls in other locations where it may be that we are able to do something creative. Should we be confronted with that situation? Listen, the bottom line is, this board, and I know this board is extremely committed to making sure that our students' nutrition is, is top priority. That was evident when we adopted a policy in advance of the New York State requirement to make sure that, that occurred. And, you know, as your superintendent, I will make sure that we carry out that philosophical belief that, you know, to the best extent possible and within our means, we'll make sure that we get food to students. And we have a tremendous community in terms of the, you know, the food bank. And if we have to, we, I could easily see people volunteering to potentially maybe deliver food from here to a central site. There are some, you know, concerns in terms of privacy. You know, we need to make sure that as long as we're, as long as we're feeding everybody and we, you're not differentiating between those who show up to pick up meals and identifying them as students in need, then we should be in good shape. I, I guess we can be very creative should the time come.
Anybody else have any questions for Barb or comments?
Yeah, this is maybe just as a follow-up to what you just said. So I don't, Chris, I don't know if you were around for this, but we discussed a few weeks ago how the state is not, or they're, they're threatening to not comp us for the, the transportation aid on our spring deliveries and that's, that's a significant expense. I don't, we may or may not be able to go down that road again, you know, if there's a significant delivery need.
I wasn't aware of that, no.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Barb? I wanna say, Barbara, you're, there was some concern what your future looks like on the curbside deal. Pat brought it up and, and if, if you don't have alternative plans, if we should be working on something with you or talking about it.
Well, I was talking to Sal about it today. My original plan was in, to go in the sunroom so it could stay warm while we're waiting. But teachers are using that for planning and lunch and all that. But I think if we stay inside those double doors where I'm at now, I think it's warm enough at this moment for us, you know, so I think it'll be okay. So at least I'm hoping so. I was a little cold today.
For the benefit of all of you, Pat, and when we did agenda planning, Pat brought up the point that, you know, as it gets colder, we've got ladies out there on the curb with, with their cart and, and being sensitive to the fact that maybe we could do something to keep them warm while they're, they're delivering food. So that was the conversation.
And I appreciate that. Appreciate you thinking about that. And cause I think about that, if I can't do it myself, will my ladies be able to, to stay warm? So I think, think inside the double doors, we're okay for now.
Maybe space heaters or something like that inside would help in colder, I don't know the heating situation there, but it sounds like you could use it.
When we start talking about 10-degree temperatures, if we're still out there doing it then, yes, maybe, you know, one of those hot air blowers might not be a bad idea. Yeah, like when you walk into the grocery stores, they have them. That might not be a bad idea.
Salamander, Mike, Mike said he's gonna begin knitting mittens for you guys, so you should have those by winter.
I want a hat and a scarf too.
And my final thing was, yeah, I hadn't eaten yet and that nice picture you put up, it looked like.
Turkey, if anybody needs, doesn't wanna cook on Thursday, maybe call Barb for some takeout.
I have some turkeys. They're just raw. It's not gonna do you any good.
Yeah, and, and you know, another, you know, shout out, Barb is, has been down a couple times. You may have seen the posting for another food service worker. Barb's been down, at least one person that I'm aware of on two different occasions. And so not, that also puts a little additional stress on her. But we've had other employees within that department step up, add a couple hours in and, and really keep the mission going. So they are, they are superstars to us. They're heroes. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm very thankful.
I wanna thank you, Barb. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move along to superintendent's second half of his report. Sal?
Yep, let me get this. Okay, I, I'll wait to go back to the agenda. So Matt, you, you wanted to just make sure I include?
Yeah, I, and you know, I'm probably straying into the outside school in, into Department of Health scope here. But you're in a lot of these conversations with our local resources here, our local agencies and we, we don't get all that great, good information. But you know, if we, if we do, you know, if we're seeing numbers that are at three or 4% and that Department of Health is telling us that, you know, we have community spread under control if, and we decide to go down that road, right? And look at mitigations and compensating controls. What, what is the type of testing regime the state is asking for? Is this surveillance testing or targeted testing? Is there, is there a type of test and like, is it gonna be quick or PC, or does it have to be PCR? And then of course, are nurses gonna be able to administer tests if, if, if we can even source them?
Yeah, so lots, lots of good questions and I have answers to most of them. Okay, where do we start? Um, let's start with, if a school district is deemed in the yellow zone by the state of New York, then the district has the decision as to whether we stay open or we close. But to stay open, we have, there's a requirement that we have to test in the first two-week period. We have to test 20% of our in-person personnel or in-person people. So that includes students, staff and students, faculty and staff. So, and you could, this can, this can be fraught with all sorts of challenges. There is a, there is a slight variation to that. If a, if a, if a, if a person has a private test and they provide you a result, that can also suffice as a person who's tested in that group. We anticipate that if we were in that situation, and I'm not in any way, shape or form publicly saying that we would stay open or not stay open during a yellow, we have a lot of factors to consider should that come to bear. But with that said, we underestimate that we'd have to test between 130 and 150 persons in this district and that Columbia County districts in total. And that Columbia County districts in total would comprise about 1100 to 1200 tests. Keep that in mind for a second. That I'll speak to the capacity of the local county department of health and concerns regarding that. With that said, the tests that they're currently using, there are three available. There is a quick antigen test when it was used last week at the testing site in in Hudson. The public health nurses were able to do 60 tests in 90 minutes. The test efficacy is such that if you are symptomatic, it is 90% accurate in determining whether those symptoms are related to a positive COVID or not. However, if you're asymptomatic, the the possibility for a false negative is extremely high. One other variation to that is if you test negative, but you have symptoms, then you are referred to a PCR test, which is for those of you who haven't been following this epidemic allergy lesson over the last few months is the deep nasal pharyngeal pharyngeal swab that goes to a a a testing lab. So that's kind of where we are with that. The second intermediate test, both of which are by Abbott Abbott Labs, is a test where you you need a reagent and a machine. I believe Columbia County owns three and actually Questar is thinking of purchasing one. Unfortunately, I think it's like three to five tests per hour. So from a practical perspective, you're talking about maybe a couple essential workers, you know, a principal or someone who is really, you know, needs that we need to know whether they are positive or negative. So with that said, if you start thinking about what you're hearing in the news, like, okay, if the school goes yellow, we're going to, oh, first of all, the the Abbott, the two Abbott tests, the antigen and the the machine with the reagent are not available publicly to the market. The federal government has purchased them all. The only way that you can get them is federal government, state government, local department of health. So we can't pick up their, I think they're about $12 or $14 a piece. I can't pick up a phone and call and create any sort of testing program absent of collaboration with our local department of health. Also, from a licensing perspective, we are, they have reduced some of the barriers to entry. There's something called a Clio waiver. Our Department of Health has one. And there's also who LSL, you're a licensed, it's the license to actually do those tests on site. We can operate, should we choose to do that? Some districts have across the state, I think down on the island, to if we did those tests here rather than at a county department of health facility, we could then operate under the county's license to do that. And there's a small little training protocol that a typically a nurse or a health aide would have to go through to do that. Not even going to get into this tonight in terms of whether there's a willingness by our healthcare professionals or other volunteers to do that, but the the protocol exists to do that. With all that said, there seems to be some concern on the local department of health level that when they order these large number of tests, they don't they don't necessarily receive them. The sense is that the tests are going right now to the high high zones, the the high infection zones. We don't know if we turned yellow, if indeed the state would then release more tests to the local department of health. The superintendents in Columbia County and the director, Jack Mam, have serious concerns around the the possibility that if we were to choose to want to stay open, whether we'd have the capacity to do that. There's a lot of, there's some other, I know going getting along winded about this, but I think it's important to understand it because the community is going to ask, why, there's going to be people on both sides of the argument. Why aren't we staying open? We can stay open because there's protocols in place to allow us to stay open. And why the heck would we want to stay open? Let's close and and shut this thing down. There you can just, oh, and because we would be testing students, they are minors, we would need release from all of their parents. Some districts had talked about potentially asking parents ahead of being identified as a yellow zone for releases. And others have said that is going to put everybody into a panic. You're going to have a number of parents who may be apt to comply. And I would imagine that there's going to be others that say, no way, no way you're going to test our students. One indication of that of that is when in this in 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 August, when we said we were going to have a day daily COVID screening survey, there was some confusion over some parents thinking we were going to test students daily as opposed to just parents reporting what their student's condition was in the morning. So you can see, like, if you, so if we end, so that they did relax a little bit of the rules first, it was going to be 20% over two weeks, and you had to continue with another unique 20%, 20%, 20% until you tested 100% of your in-person participants or in-person students and teachers. They have backed off on that. You test the first 20% in the two-week period. And depending on the infection rate, if the infection rate that you're experiencing is lower than the threshold that they set, then you could remain open. If it's not, then then you would be forced to close. But you could also see that if we identify the logistics around this, if we were not to necessarily do it on site, but do it at a location, you know, you've got potentially transportation logistics, you have authorization logistics, you have you have administrators and administration and personnel concerns. So, you know, it is fraught with a lot of challenges and complications. So I I hope that wasn't too much, and I hope I kind of narrowed down a little bit for you. You know, there seems to be right now, and I don't want to speak for my colleagues in Columbia County. But if if you were listening to what I was just saying, if we if we were to be identified as a yellow zone right now, given the information that we have and we discussed, we may be more apt to close, go to full remote to give it some time to get past that infection rate. That would seem to be one of the options that we would be more favorable than trying to get into a a testing regimen. But I don't, this is not, this is not a commitment one way or the other. Things change too fast regarding COVID. And I would want to have an opportunity to really evaluate all the data and circumstances should we come to that point.
Yeah, just so just as a follow up, I'm 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 left with the impression that unless we receive the same kind of assistance that that SUNY received to do their surveillance testing, that we don't have the resources here in county to do the same type of regimen. So unless the state decides to target us with with support, all types of support, really, that it would be difficult.
I I would agree with that that assertion for sure.
And Sal, to that end, is that why you said it it seems perhaps more likely that the district would close because of that, because we literally don't have the resources to be able to meet that that threshold of testing?
That that's the sense that the Columbia County superintendents, that's where we are right now.
Yeah.
You could just imagine the the logistics around getting permission and having testing. You know, we all see the benefit of the rapid tests, right? We we see that at some point down the road to bring a student, the isolation room is actually through that door that says E2 on it. It's the old conference room. You know, to bring a student in there and at some point in the future be able to, you know, has some sniffles, has a runny nose, has a headache, whatever the COVID-like symptoms are, to be able to come in there, have them do a, you know, an antigen test, a quick antigen test and verify whether there's, you know, a positive or negative result. And then decide to be able to, you know, go back to classroom or share with the parents that we don't feel this is COVID has a lot of benefit. We're just, we're just way too far from being being there at this point. Some counties don't even accept the rapid test. Albany County right now is not accepting the rapid test as as valid results.
Could I circle back to one of the comments you made about yellow zones and testing? I believe you said that the school doesn't know, you know, the capacity, if if the area were to turn yellow, if, you know, the testing would change, would become available through New York State, if they would open some other gate and that would become available. Is that right?
Yes, you know, this is just speculation on the director of Department of Health's party, you know, he said until we become one of those zones, you know, he's not certain whether resources will be allocated to us in a different manner than what they have.
I'm surprised to hear that. I'm surprised that, you know, New York State hasn't provided, you know, if this happens, then this happens kind of scenario.
Well, you know, and again, if you if you followed the trajectory or extrapolate what has happened in the past, they've put resources where it's kind of just in time, right? They they weren't overstocking PPE. You know, the governor was assuring that there'll be enough when you need it, but we're not going to stack pile it for you. So there's nothing to say, and I don't want to go on record as saying that if we were to go yellow, there wouldn't be enough testing. It's just as as it is our experiences over the last few months and and given the current inventory, right now, it seems likely to be able to pull up if if nothing changes. Okay, so jumping around a little bit here, as you know, by the email I sent you, we are, we are one of the few districts that has not had positive cases that have actually impacted our in-person instruction. As you know, from the email, we had, we did have two students who tested positive. They were last on campus on November 9th, kind of a fluke, right? They were and again, I'm very careful about personal personally identifiable information. But, you know, our our press release did say it was a middle school and high school student, which means that they're in some sort of hybrid, which means that they're not here every day. So if you take November 9th, and they're not here on the 10th, the 11th was Veterans Day, and we closed two days because of our IT issues, and then then they were not in attendance the following week. It just worked out that we were very lucky. The 14th day would have been yesterday, and the Department of Health said there's no impact. I we have our, some of our our local colleagues have not been have not been as lucky when it comes to that. So right now, as of 4 o'clock today, which is when you we usually get the calls, we we still have no positive cases that have that are impacting in-person instruction. And again, I I mentioned it earlier, but there is no hidden agenda. There's no, you know, people are like, we're, you know, I think we're going to go full remote. It's all speculation. I I obviously, when you look at the infection rate and how it's climbing in the state and climbing in the region, people can make their own inferences, but we are not sitting here saying we think we're going to go remote on Monday, and we're not telling anybody. That 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 will be based on a decision as the information, as more information and data becomes available and as things change. So I wanted to kind of reassure the board that, you know, there's there's no discussion going on behind the scenes in that regard. I already talked about testing capacity in the zones. We really covered that pretty quickly. The only other thing, too, you know, if the governor's press conference yesterday, you know, he made an interesting comparison. He said, you know, we went from like 1200 cases to almost 3000. And if you if you use that trajectory, even before the holidays hit, that's pretty alarming. And we can quickly be at, you know, 6000 cases. And and as the number of cases increase, so does the hospitalization, so does the 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 deaths. And that's concerning. And then if you you put in the 37 days between Thanksgiving and the holiday break, where, as he refers to it, probably some of the the greatest socialization occurs amongst family, which is where they're seeing all this community spread come from, right? We, you know, we, in schools, we're doing a really good job keeping, obviously keeping the infection rate from spreading within our schools, but it's coming from it's coming from community spread. And, you know, we can, we can always speculate that during those times, that's where we're going to see whether this is the tipping point or not. I would speculate that somewhere in that first week of December, we'll see if there was any impact from holiday travel around Thanksgiving. And then, you know, again, at the first of the year, some some districts across the state who have very high infection rates have discussed closing from now till January 19th, which would be roughly 14 days after the holiday break was was over. Again, that's not where we are right now. We are, we did share with you, and I generally copy you on everything I share with the staff, the updated travel advisories. I'm going to take a second to go over with because it's over with you because it is confusing to some. And I've gotten quite a few questions from parents. Actually, I've had two two sets of kind of two categories of questions. What do we do if we have people coming in from out of town? I have people coming from Virginia, people coming from Florida. Folks, I I can't tell you how, you know, I can't tell tell you how to live your life. If if that's something you're doing, then you're doing it. There's no, there's no pre, there's no precautionary quarantine because you're, you know, your cousins came up from Virginia. And that's something you have to discuss amongst your own family and 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 make a make a judgment about. But the way the testing works, and even the governor said yesterday, you know, some of the some of the from a practical perspective, he can't put a travel ban on Pennsylvania, Vermont, New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts, right? It's people work and live across these borders that it would be almost impossible to do. But what's alarming in regard to that is the infection rate, and I don't want to misquote him, the infection rate like in New Jersey is like 7%. And some of these other bordering states are are higher than we are. And so, you know, logic would dictate that because there's a lot of movement going on that that's going to negatively impact us. But what I wanted to say is, so the travel, the new travel advisory is this. If you are not traveling from a bordering state and you are going to a state for less than 24 hours, you do not have to quarantine on your way back. But technically, I don't know how this can be enforced unless you're on a plane, but technically, you're supposed to still fill out the traveler form, and you're supposed to get tested on the fourth day. Good luck if you can find a test. And you're not necessarily being referred by a doctor, which a lot of testing centers are not allowing for a test if you're not referred from a medical professional. And testing results now went from one to three days at some of the at Wadsworth and some of the other sites to now three, five and seven days. So coming back, if you have to test on the fourth day and you have to wait five to seven days for results, you really, at the end of the day, only going to shave off a few days. And if you if you add in two weekends, you're only going to shave off a few days of that quarantine period. And I think a lot of people are going to say it's too difficult for me to get a test. I'm just better off sitting out for the 14 days and we'll go from there. So that that's just speculation. If you're staying in those states for more than 24 hours, then the protocol is that you get tested 72 hours before you leave the state that you're traveling from. And then on the fourth day when you return, and when you have two negative tests, you can prove to the department of health that you can safely return to school or work. And again, depending on those testing results in all practical matters of speaking, it may shave off a few days off of quarantine. And now, if you're talking about a family of four, six, having to go through that, I can easily see parents saying, let's just, you know, let's just keep the kids home. So I just want to talk a little bit about the travel advisory. We are going, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting because remember, we also probably have some staff that are traveling. And we'll have to see, you know, I did send out, I copied you on that, a caution that intentionally traveling during the travel ban and coming back and not being able to work could be problematic. You know, we can't really tell that to parents or students, but we do have staff who have, you know, contractual obligations to districts. But we're going to have to, we have certain advice we've gotten from legal on that, and we're going to have to wait and see if if that plays out. So not to open up a Pandora's box, but a lot of things going on. It seems like I can't remember what I did as a superintendent before COVID, to be quite honest with you. Every day, it's almost consumed entirely with with COVID-related issues, except the last thing I want to mention is our IT-related issues, right? A little bit of good, a little bit of, I think, cautiously optimistic news is, as you know, we've been in full session all week last week and and so far yesterday and today, as I reported to you, we we were further down the path of having some, and I'm going to keep it very vague, some additional hardware and and services in place. And so not that I want to tempt fate, fate, but, you know, now it'll be interesting. We really won't quite know until perhaps we have another attack as to how effective it is. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not waiting for, I'm not looking for one in the in the near future because I'll take this when I can get it. We've been uninterrupted now. And it's, it feels great that we can continue doing what we're doing. So that's the IT security update as well.
That's very good news.
What's that?
I just wanted to say that's very good news.
Yes, I I will tell you that for the first and and as last week, as that as that implementation was being kind of, it was in place, but it was being tweaked. And it was, you know, we, every day, more of the implementation was was completed. And then finally, I think this weekend, we discovered a couple of things that still needed to be kind of configured. And 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 now I can tell you that I I feel much better holding my breath every morning at 7:55 to to see if I've got internet connectivity. just to see if I've got internet connectivity or not and how, how, that's a, that's a gauge of how good the day is going to go. So about 10 after eight, when, when I can do my email, I'm like celebrating. So anyway, and, and the last piece of that was, and you know, we're also pursuing and don't have an update in terms of timeframe, but the redundancy of our connection too. So we, you know, and again, shout out to Matt, who's been a huge help along the way as a sounding board and as, as some advice during this. And the last thing is, you know, I, before the end of the meeting, I just wanted to, you know, just wish everybody a sincere happy Thanksgiving and the opportunity to spend time with your, with your close family. And there were a lot of people who through COVID don't have someone sitting at the table with them this year. And I think we need to be reminded that this, this has had impact on a lot of, a lot of families around the state, so. I'll open it up for questions. Any other things that I may have not?
Do you have any questions or comments for Sal?
One more. I know we're all sick of hearing about COVID. You know, there's been justification over the years around winter break and how it breaks up flu season. And, you know, stops a normal flu. It may be, it may be conveniently timed here this year. And I'm curious if, if our numbers continue to trend positively over the next few weeks. If, you know, it, rather than waiting for the state to close us or us to be forced to close if, if there's some public health impact to considering the length of that break, may perhaps having a positive impact in terms of our, our staff and our students. You know, it's, it's, it's a break that's not quite long enough for a quarantine period. But something to start thinking about because we won't, we won't have the opportunity to put any plans in place soon. It would all be an emergency.
Taken into consideration, I, I think what, what's interesting, what's intriguing to me, and this is not unique to Chatham. And it is a generalization to some extent, because there are some exceptions to the rule that I've been a party to. But for the most part, remote instruction in no way, shape or form right now, not that maybe someday it won't, pales in comparison to in-person. Aside from the fact that, you know, parents, it assists parents in terms of sending their students while they're working. A good example of that, and maybe it's not fair to use another district, but today I just read an email from one of my counterpart, James Franchini in, in April Park. If you've been following this playbook, they have probably been hit the hardest of all the districts in the Questar region. I can't, I lost count how many positive cases they've had. They've had cases at the high school, they had cases at the middle school. It's kind of been, I don't think a day's gone by in the last few weeks where they haven't had a positive case. I think the last of their quarantine, quarantining for their current cases ends next week. And they're, they are bringing everybody back. And in his email today, that he, generally we share with each other, he says, "It's because the more we can keep students in school, the better we know they can, they can, they can make out." And so, and that was, that's my message to parents too. We don't, even when it came to the IT closure, we do not take closes in school lightly. And I know that's not what you're suggesting, Matt. I, you know, you're, it's precautionary, it's, it's proactive and it'll be a discussion. And I don't know if you agree, but it's, it's like, even though that break isn't 14 days, people will probably travel not only for what would be Christmas and, and if there's any other holidays in there, but also New Year's. And then, so it's almost like you need those 14 days after the existing break to kind of really kind of flush it out. So that's why I see, and there's Martin Luther King Day is the 18th of January. So if you take 14 days from the January 4th, when we typically would come back, you're seeing, that's why you're seeing some schools in the state say, we're out till the 19th of, 19th of January, so.
All right, any other questions for Sal or should we get moving on?
Is our, is our janitorial staff, they must have, how are they doing with all of this?
You know, they're, they're doing well. They've stepped up like every department, like Barb's department, like transportation. The interesting thing that we knew, remember too, we have no activities going on in the school. There's no after-school activities, there's no sports. So that has afforded us some time in terms of typically what they are, you know, having to handle in the evening. So all that time now is to deeper cleaning, more disinfecting and sanitizing of the air.
That's a good answer. I didn't think that, that's.
And the other piece that goes into that a little bit is because we have not had any positive cases or quarantining of classrooms or teachers within our building, although I'd argue that we, we are cleaning, we would clean those rooms equally as, equally as deep every night. But we, you know, if we would have a few cases, then there's another level of, of disinfecting that goes on, so.
Thank you.
Sal, I just, I don't know if you're the right person to even ask the question, but in terms of the, the resources we, the school has for cleaning agents and such, how are we doing with, you know, supplies and things in kind of the worst case scenario?
Yeah, so Chris, you, you would have been afforded the opportunity earlier in the school year. We purchased a huge amount of product in the spring prior to us going fully remote. So that, that, and, you know, anticipating that we probably would be back to school or we, so we, we started out the school year, July, August with a tremendous amount of supply. But we also strategically purchased it because what we, you know, what we were afraid of, whether it's masks, PPE or cleaning supplies, and you're starting to see it on the shelves now, is you never know when that can change. So I, I've been reassured that we, at, at some point, not too long ago, was reassured that we have about a year supply of cleaning product in stock. So that we know that we can make it from now to hopefully, you know, next summer into the fall, where we would not have to worry about, we could get, you know, get by on existing, on existing stock. So, and I think that's, you know, that's a good play. You know, we, we saw it before as, you know, simple economics, as demand went up, as supply, as, as demand went up and supply went down, prices got ridiculous. Things that you could buy, as we've all experienced as consumers, things that you could buy pre-COVID and now, you know, in the middle of this are just, you know, it's insane. So, but I hope that, you know, we are, we are in good shape. And again, sorry, I'm kind of taking a lot of time with COVID tonight. But we, we also in terms of PPE, because we were not able to, at the time, guarantee that we had to write gowns and stuff for our nurses. What we did is we chose to go with one of the few options that was available, but it's turned out to be, you know, a good move, is we now have a laundered service. So we are with the, we are with Synthes, the uniform and laundering service. And so our, we have, we have a service that drops off clean gowns and lab coats or medical coats for our nurses so that we didn't have to worry about running out of gowns. They were, they were, at some point, they were tough, we couldn't purchase them. And we were able to not only do that, but we were able to, to purchase a sufficient slide, supply of N95 masks for them. We were able to get face shields and other products that, you know, were necessary.
All right, let's end this on a positive note. Mr. Superintendent, tell us a little something about the virtual National Honor Society.
So, was that after the last board meeting? So, okay, so we, was it on November 16th? Our National Honor Society attempted to have its first, first annual virtual induction ceremony. A little bit unfortunately, the advisor was experiencing some significant internet issues at their private residence. And so John and I kind of had to play a little bit of backup to that. I know your daughter was, was participated. I would, I would say that despite, again, some technical issues that plagued us, you know, we, we tried to do a very good job of honoring those that were inducted into that prestigious society. We then, I believe, made available the slideshow or the plan was to make the slideshow available afterwards as well. And we did have a huge response on Facebook in terms of people congratulating those who were inducted into the, into the National Honor Society. So it, what it was indicative of is, you know, last year, we were concerned about our graduating seniors and we did what we could to make graduation special, considering the circumstances. And as you know, it turned out relatively well considering what we had to deal with. And I'm not sure we had speculated at that point that this year's seniors would be impacted to the extent that they are. And I think at the end of the day, when we write this, we write this book, to some extent, this year's seniors may end up being impacted to a greater extent than even last year's seniors, who've only had the last few months of their senior year disrupted. So the, the staff, the principals, myself, we're cognizant of that. And, you know, I know we're creatively trying to address and provide opportunities for the remainder of this year that try to mitigate what they're being cheated from. So know that we're at least to the best, best extent possible thinking of that and hoping that we can be as creative as we were with graduation to show this year's seniors that they're just as important and just as special to us as, as we did at graduation in the fall. And I know, Craig, if you were listening in or if you had any comments in terms of National Honor Society, but it was a little bit, you know, it was a little bit disrupted by technical issues.
I heard it was a little rocky, but overall, everybody stepped up like usual and it came off real good. So heard, heard good things.
Good.
John, John did a good job. I heard you stepped in and helped out and it went over really well. So I think, you know, it's typical for Chatham. We, we hit some bumps every now and then, but we managed to get over them quite well. So thanks to everybody that was involved and, and then made that happen, so.
I think our students are learning that in their life, things may not always go like they planned and that they need to have a good plan B, that's for sure.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, we're going to move around, move along here. Policy Committee, Pat, do you have something for us?
Oh, I sure do. As you can see from the first reading this meeting, we were very productive at our meeting last week. What we've done, what we're focusing on right now are the required changes to required policies. So the, the one you have tonight, the required policy 5676 data privacy and security policy. Obviously, we finished up in, it was going to first reading tonight. And some of the others were kind of follow-ups from that review. 1620, we just had an update to add protective protection, data protection officer. And then there were updates of the policy on public access to records and the record retention and destruction policy that we added. We moved from one to the other. But all, all, all those really were the result of looking at the required changes to the required policies of, on data privacy and also of student records that you'll be seeing and probably at the next meeting. And we are continuing to look at, once we, I think we have one more after that. That's a required policy on sexual harassment. And then the rest of them are recommended changes to required policies that we'll be looking at at our next meetings and, and, and of January, I think January 21st. So by that time, everybody has some homework policies that they're going to be looking at. So hopefully we can keep things moving along in the interim. No, no, no Christmas break this year for any of us.
All right, well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Pat or any comments from the people, that folks that help her out on that committee?
I sure hope the comments I had added with the first readings helped you all follow the policy changes.
I'm wondering if we, we're going to be able to offer up, Sal's the tech guy, he's way ahead of us. Are there such things as, I know there's cookies on the internet, are there cookies for our meetings?
We have the bus drivers deliver them to your home on board meeting nights.
All right, so that's, we're going to be bouncing back to that on, on first readings. And I'll explain some to the, some new board members of the readings, what that is. Well, Ted actually should know, he's been on policy for a few years. But, all right, and then we're going to bounce to finance. I don't see any hands up or comments. We'll bounce to finance and that's Pat, I guess, also, right?
Okay, yeah, the finance committee, we did again last week. It was a busy Thursday for all of us, or some of us, I should say. It was rather fairly brief meeting in that we just had one subject and that was the proposed changes to the financial reserve plan, or really not so much proposed changes, but up, but updates to the financial reserve plan. There's really no major changes, just the estimates have changed to some extent based on assessed risks put together. And, and he will be briefing the board in detail at the December 8th meeting. So you'll be seeing that, everything then. There's really no surprises that, you know, the big thing was, you know, there was a carryover from last year operating by Wise Fiscal Management of roughly $1.7 million, which has been used to help buttress the plans for this, the reserve plans for this coming year based on assessed risks. So I think, you know, considering everything, we are at this point in good shape. But at the same time, looking ahead as to the all of the unknowns, it's still, you know, there's a lot of questions of what's going to happen in the next year or two with the COVID and then the impact of state and federal funding. So, but Mike will be going over that in more detail on the December 8th meeting.
Okay, any questions or comments for Pat or any comments from any of the committee members? All right, moving right along. Chatham Education Foundation, Muriel or Sal, do you have a report for us?
Muriel, I don't know if you were able to attend that enough.
Yeah, I, I was in there, but I kept getting kicked out.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
I can understand that.
So go ahead, I've got notes, but go ahead.
I give you an overview and then you can jump in. So, you know, I just was, you know, there's really three key notes from, from the meeting. First of all, typically the Education Foundation would come together after school starts and the grant applications would go in in October or be awarded in October. And early on, Melanie Spock, who runs the, the president of the foundation, right, I think president, we, her and I spoke and we identified that, you know, given COVID, everything is different. And that it might make more sense that we postpone it till we know more about how the school year is going to look. So at this last meeting, a few things were discussed. First of all, some of the, some of the grants did not have an opportunity to spend out their money from, from last spring. Some had field trips planned and other activities and they didn't take place because of cancellation. Mike and the business office confirmed that those balances still exist. They have not been sent back to Berkshire. Yep, so we are hopeful that those, some of those individuals will still be able to do some of the activities this year. But we also are acknowledging that the year could end up being very challenging as well. And that what we did is we, we were taking time to solicit some ideas from teachers and from principals as to some creative ways that the grant money can be spent this year in terms. as to some creative ways that the grant money can be spent this year in terms of perhaps virtual events. Some local entities and, and others have kind of pivoted and are now offering some of their what used to be their in-person activities virtually and could teachers be kind of guided and directed towards what that might look like to enrich students' experiences. Given the fact that they may not be able to be in school to do that. So that was kind of the gist of things. We're gonna come back, I think in this, early December and talk again about whether we then open up the RFPs or the proposals, the applications in January and award at some point at the beginning of the year to have some sort of activity that the educational foundation is supporting in the, in the spring. If that's not the case, it's still a foundation. And so that spendable balance, including any funds, there was a general consensus that if last year's unspent money, which isn't significant, but it is there, is not, is not able to be spent this year, that would go back in to the, to the kitty. It wouldn't go again yet another year, but that could be then added to the spendable balance for this year. And it'll just make future opportunities that much, that much greater. But we haven't come to that conclusion yet. We'll be, we're having much more, many more discussions in December regarding that. In, in the time that you were able to listen in, if, if there was anything else.
December, December eighth, we have another meeting.
Okay. Does any, anybody have any questions or concerns? No hands. Okay, we're gonna move along to new business. This is policy first readings. Pat, you want to take it? Do you want me to slumber down through this?
Okay, I didn't mention how will you normally approach that?
This is different. That's why, so I want to explain to the new board members. We, we do two readings and I thought that we did some first readings. I don't recall some seconds on. I see. So you may have to, but you may have to help me out.
These are the first readings we've had so far this year.
Okay. All right. Wow. All right. So so these readings, we read them two times. Any questions or concerns and we have an opportunity to make changes. That's why the two readings to the new board members. And then, then we vote on them. So if this is all first readings, there's backup for you. If you don't understand it, if you have any questions immediately, we can get into it. But policy fifty-six seventy-six. Information on data privacy, security, breach and notification regulation. We're gonna do, all right, we're doing a fifty-six seventy-six R. What's, can you explain that?
Those are the regulations that go along with the actual policy. And this is, we have two policy services. One is Bosie's Erie and the other one is NISBA. And this policy was, came from a sample policy from NISBA and it best seems to be their way of doing a lot of these technical big policies is having basic policy and then it's another regulation which is attached rather than combining all in one. So that's the reason they, they go together essentially.
We're gonna need a bigger manual.
Actually, no, because the, the good thing about this, this draft policy is it consolidated about four or five others. We've actually are going to be deleting. Well, I think there were five policies that we've, that have developed over time and they've been pieced out, rather fragmented. And this, this draft policy pulls it all together into one. So it makes it much easier to and much more comprehensive and inclusive at the same time.
Right.
So, which is good. It's bringing us into the twenty-first century when it comes to this, this issue. Let's, let's put it that way.
Policy thirty-three ten, public access to records foil requests. Policy fifty-six seventy-one, records retention and destruction. Policy sixteen twenty, annual organizational meeting. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or on any of these policies that I just read?
I got one. So of course I had to chime in here on fifty-six seventy-six. Paragraph one talks about adopting a cybersecurity compliance framework. I think that's great. CSF may be appropriate. It's a great standard. I like that it, it asks for assessments. But before we pen that, I'm curious. Sal, did you key in on that? And are you aware, like, have you, do you have a resourcing plan for those assessments? You're on mute.
Yep, I was just looking for that button. So a couple of things. One, and I couldn't, you jumbled a little bit, but the the security framework work is one that's coming down from the state education department and it's, was it the NIST? Security framework so that we would be subjected to that framework. And the assessment piece, we would still have to, we still have to kind of suss out a little bit. One of the things that we kind of were left with a little bit of a gap is when Lucas left, he's our and tonight later on in the consent agenda where we're appointing Lisa, some of the titles that Lucas currently or had previously held. The data protection officer, which is a requirement of the state education department, is one of them. And in that role, part of Lisa's responsibilities will be to start to get us in, in compliance with some of the title to, or some of the two D law that has come about and is now being implemented at the state level beginning this last, this last summer. So, so we've got, we've got, the conference I was just at this weekend, there were a lot of discussions in terms of, you know, districts position, given everything COVID, that a lot of people have not had a chance to kind of put a lot of this stuff in place and that, you know, districts are about where we are and that is just at the beginning phases of addressing all of their requirements from the state education department.
Sure. So flexibility we have in, in frameworks, although NIST CSF can be accessed at many different levels in terms of maturity. You can go low or you can go high, you know, in terms of our D P going to security. But the point that I wanna really address is the assessment. So I would really love to hear the school is going to put in place assessments that are required to happen annually. But if we're gonna pen that in a policy, I want to make sure we select the, an assessment methodology that's sustainable and isn't gonna cost a ton of money and be something we can't resource effectively. So I guess choosing, from your perspective, Sal, did depth of assessment that you think is sustainable and then making that part of the cybersecurity policy would be what I would look for as, as a, as a board member concerned in cybersecurity.
I know you've mentioned we're using NISBA and we're using Erie one still. Did, what influenced your guys' choice on this policy or both?
I'm sorry?
Was there an influence from Erie one or NISBA?
Yeah, actually, the first draft was based on Bosie's Erie's sample policy. However, trying to reconcile it with the draft policy on student, student records, it became a little challenging. And, you know, bottom line is it, it partly because the NISBA's policy was all-inclusive, whereas the Bosie's Erie policy was just limited to students and teachers and principals and exclude, excluded all other personnel. We just ended up, you know, essentially going to using the NISBA sample policy. And making a number of edits to it though, to bring in some, some of the information that was in the Bosie's Erie sample policy. So, so we kind of, to some extent merged it. The emphasis, Bosie's Erie tends to place more emphasis on detailing the kind of the responsibilities of the various personnel which were, we consider more of, you know, should be included in position descriptions. So that was the take, the direction we had taken a couple of years ago and we revamped the entire policy manual. So the NISBA's policy, sample policy is a little bit more in, in aligned with our approach anyway. So it's kind of a combination, but more, more based on the NISBA sample policy than Bosie's Erie.
I'm wondering if Matt's concerns should be addressed in a policy or should be in some kind of scheduling.
Yeah, a lot of it, I think it's something that we can discuss further, Sal, and you know, at the next, you know, policy meeting as to whether that's tri-pi policy or more, more of a procedural.
Yeah.
Issue. So it's something we'll have to take a look and discuss.
Speaking from, you know, I've written a lot of cybersecurity policies and it's my business. The policy should say the schedule. In terms of the type of assessment, I would leave that to the district to find one that's sustainable and right-sized.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking you were trying to say rather than.
So, you know, if, if we just, you know, add some words to it, to the assessment saying, you know, an annual assessment, you know, would that, you know, from your standpoint, would that suffice at this point?
Yeah, it, it, as long as you guys check in with Sal before you pen it, because it, as it's written, decide a CSF assessment is too much to absorb every year. Or he may, or, or one of his resources may look at that and say, you know what, we can do this internally, no problem. But I, you know, I, we, I'm not looking to make this like a three-week project for someone every year, you know? But, but having some reporting back to the board on an annual basis of whether we decide to make that it's subject to confidentiality or something that's public, that should be reportable on an annual basis.
All right. Well, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or concern about any of these policies? All right. Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Matt. Would your good questions? They'll address it and we'll read them, read them out again.
And Ted was a major part of the discussion too on these policies as, as a community member first and now as a board member.
Yes. Yep. Well, thank you, Ted. You're muted. You can practice once and unmute. Any comments on that policy review?
I'm fine.
Thank you.
I did, I wrote down Matt's comments, so we address them at the next meeting.
Good jobs. All right. Well, if nobody else, this guy has any more comments on any of those policies, we'll bring them up next meeting. And, or whenever's possible. I don't know how often you guys been meeting and with the holidays coming up and stuff, so.
Not until January.
Yeah. All right. All right. No hands up? We're gonna move along. R thirty-three. Need a motion to file COVID guidelines without changes to policy. Can I get a motion on that?
Motion.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
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 R thirty-four, it resolved that the Board of Education accepted consensus agenda, I through K as written.
Don't move.
Get a motion.
Don't move.
Quickly.
Second.
Quickly.
Questions or comments?
K two. I'm assuming there's agreements in place with others of the same ilk, correct?
What was the last part of that? Agreements with what?
They have an agreement with Ichabod Crane here on K two. I'm assuming there's agreements with others as well, correct?
Not currently. This is in regard to a special education student that is, that Ichabod subcontracts with us to provide services. We do not currently have any students from any other districts at this time.
Should we float them for future reference?
Well, tip, typically, normal. I think, Sal, I, I think that what Ted's asking is generally, do we do this across the board? If I'm right, Ted, if not, answer, but yes, we do share other services with other school districts. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Ichabod, this is not the one deal that we have, Sal. That's what I think he was concerned about with one district. This is its own specific.
This is specifically regarding a student who's attending.
Right.
We do not have any other agreements in place, shared sayers agreements. That's typically what happens through Questar, right? So we, we're a member of Questar and that's where we share services with the other districts through.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? No hands. All right. Moving along. Items for future agenda. Board members have any future agenda items? All right. Second public comment. I see we have four attendees. Thanks for hanging in there tonight. Folks, does anybody have a comment before we close out this meeting? All right. I see nothing. You don't see anything, Sal? Hands up. All right. How about? Happy holidays from Mr. Fortran. Thank you. You too. Everybody have good holidays and stay safe. Can I get it? Can I get that motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
So moved.
Any last comments? Yes, thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving all. All in favor? Good night, everybody.
Stay safe, everybody.
Take care everyone.
Take care.
Bye now.